All right. Ready? Okay, good morning to the Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting for March 7th, 2023. We'll call this meeting to order and we'll start with a moment of silence. And you have one?
So in the, I believe in the city of Clear Lake, Richard Rodriguez, met him when I was working over at the community college. He was in culinary arts class, just a really happy-go-lucky gentleman that really lightened up the room every time he was there. Unfortunately, just heard of his passing over the weekend and just want us to hold him in our hearts and prayers and think of his family and friends who are experiencing a loss.
Also have a moment of silence. A moment of silence for maybe Anaya Rose Rivera, the Middletown Rancher we lost, had a losses on Friday or Saturday morning. So I want to give a moment of silence for the Rivera family for the Middletown Rancher.
Sheriff, do you want to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda?
The two, they are posted.
They're posted as extra items.
And there's an extra item now appearing on the posted.
So should we start with 4.1?
Okay.
Okay, 4.1, are we pulling that one?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Would like to move this to the 314 agenda for further discussion.
Okay. And 4.2, extra item, consideration of extra item and B, consideration to hold special meeting in March 2023 to interview county council candidates in closed session on selected date.
Yes, does the board wish to consider this item?
Based on the information within the memo, it seems that this came up after the posting of the agenda and needs our action prior to the next posting of the agenda.
Yes, thank you. So this is my book.
So I move to approve the extra item.
Second.
With that reason.
Any public comment?
I am not online. Apologize. There are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And is there a third item?
Good morning, Board. I need to grant county counsel. This comes to you literally at the last minute as documents are going through the closing process for the Collier Avenue housing project. The circumstances that are before your board, if you decide to take this up, are issues that do have to be decided as immediately as possible and well before the next board meeting on the 14th. These matters also have been evolving and have arisen since the posting of this particular agenda.
Okay, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, with the reason provided to us, I approve the extra item to be placed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Are, yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I need to pull item 5.1 just for some.
Cleanup?
Cleanup, yeah, some wordsmithing, I guess, in the beginning and also to change. Yeah, so I'll just leave it at that. I need to pull those items to discuss here with the board, please.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I'd like to pull 5.3 for a couple of corrections.
Okay, and Supervisor Sabatier?
I'd like to pull item 5.6, 5.10, and 5.18. I believe 5.18 will be on a future agenda. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is 5.18 the only one that we're pulling for? The rest of them will be discussing?
I believe so.
Okay. Okay. Anything from the public?
I see no hands in Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Whoever wants to do this, find one.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, from the consent agenda, 5.2, 5.4, 5.5, 5.7 through 5.9, and 5.11 through 5.17.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We're nine, we're at 6.1, 9:06. Public input. If anyone in the chambers or on Zoom room, in the Zoom room, can state your name and have three minutes.
There is a hand from Greta Zeit.
Okay. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, sorry about that, I was muted. I am a business owner in Middletown and have been very concerned about the lack of high-speed internet service. I spoke with Mike Thompson's office about money coming from the Build Back Better bill that was passed in the Congress, and they said that they would be happy to proceed as soon as they get a plan from the county supervisors. Has the county supervisors made such a plan and do you plan on doing so?
Okay, thank you. Can you give your name for the record, please?
Greta Zeit.
Zeit, okay. This is public input. At this time, we can't engage in a conversation, but your supervisor is here.
I will reach out to you later this evening, Greta, and give you the update.
Okay, thank you.
No further hands in Zoom.
Okay, we'll move on to 6.2, our 9:07 item, presentation of proclamation designating the month of. The month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County. Supervisor Green.
I don't know if there's anybody here to present to. I have a lovely proclamation, which I can read into the record. Or if somebody is expected to get this proclamation, we can just trail this until that person is present.
Well, we have this as a timed item, so go ahead and read it.
All right. Proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, designating the month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County, whereas during American Red Cross Month in March, we celebrate the humanitarian spirit of Lake County and reaffirm our commitment to help ensure no one faces a crisis alone. And whereas caring for one another is at the heart of our community and exemplified by the people of Lake County, whose simple acts of kindness through the Red Cross provide help and hope in people's most difficult moments, continuing the life-saving legacy of Clara Barton, who founded the Red Cross more than 140 years ago to prevent and alleviate human suffering. And whereas every day, these ordinary individuals lend a helping hand to make an extraordinary difference for neighbors in need, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food, and comfort for families displaced by home fires and other disasters, supporting military members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, using vital skills like first aid and CPR to help others survive medical emergencies, or delivering international humanitarian aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by crises around the world. And whereas their support, volunteerism, and generous donations are critical to our community's resilience, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who fulfill Clara Barton's noble words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it," and ask everyone to join in this commitment. And now therefore be it resolved that the Lake County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims March 2023 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Lake County to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. Passed and adopted this seventh day of March 2023.
Thank you, Supervisor Green. In our county, we rely so heavily on volunteers, and the Red Cross are the individuals in our community that always show up, except in the case of last week when they were all snowed in in Grass Valley. And we kind of had to figure out how we go at it without our Red Cross volunteers. So that was a big moment for us to understand how much we rely on them. I've been an event-based volunteer several times during our disasters, and the teams that mobilize and come in and perform at such a high level for our communities is always astounding. So I'm really grateful for their support. If anyone is interested in going through the training to become a Red Cross volunteer, you can reach out to me directly and I can connect you to the local people in our organization. Anyone else?
We have a hand up from Crystal Marketan, our Director of the Social Services.
Great.
Good morning. While I did not know this was on the agenda this morning, I can't let it go by without voicing our appreciation also. The Department of Social Services is a primary county responder for sheltering, but we could not do that alone, and we do appreciate the Red Cross every year in the summer, and this year also in their partnership with the recent warming centers. So again, I just really appreciate all of the Red Cross personnel that work here in Lake County and the volunteers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other hands?
No other hands up in Zoom.
Supervisor Crandall?
What?
Your pen.
Oh, sorry. That's from earlier. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I would also too, just to like to thank the Red Cross. Also, Crystal, Crystal's Department, Department of Social Services, the Sheriff's Department, everybody comes together, obviously, today is to honor the Red Cross. They do step up. I know that each and every one of us from the tribal governments that do open up shelters have had training and agreements with the Red Cross, so we can work together to help our communities. But I want to thank everybody who does that, you know, throughout the tragedy or the disasters when they are happening, so. But the Red Cross is a great organization here in Lake County that really steps up to help with those facilities being run.
And you have a tremendous volunteer in your household.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just think they are a piece in the puzzle. It takes a lot of folks and agencies to do the work that we all need to have accomplished during our emergencies, and Red Cross is one of those incredible agencies that comes through again and again to provide the services that we need when we are the most vulnerable and appreciate their services.
Okay. So I have a message about someone wanting to join the meeting at 10 o'clock to speak about Red Cross Month.
That would be Pastor Shannon.
Yeah. Do we, should we open this one back up when we get there?
Your board can certainly decide to open up again for further comment in the future in, later in the meeting, if you wish to.
Okay. So if she wants to let us know when she's available, I'm happy to open this back up for her comments. Okay, we will move on to 6.3, our 9:15 item, consideration of letter requesting a change to federal law regarding Medicaid inmate exclusion policy. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. A while ago, I started doing a little bit of research, especially in knowing that we were going to have to renew our jail medical. We've had those conversations for, I want to say, the greater part of 2022, until we finally approved the latest contract in December. And we knew that it was going to be an expensive endeavor to ensure that our inmates were provided the appropriate medical services. Had already reached out in the past to Senator McGuire to see what was possible to get help from the state, had worked with our prior sheriff to figure out what the numbers were, and approximately, let me go ahead and share the document that I was working on, rather than just keep talking. Just a simple. Slideshow here. So what the letter talks about is MIEP Medicaid inmate exclusion policy. What it says here is that inmates in public institutions are excluded from Medicaid. This is in quotes at the bottom, "Any such payments with respect to care or services for any individuals." I can't read the rest, it's underneath. An individual who is an inmate of a public institution, and prior to that, it talks about how any other medical care or remedial care does not include the following. And so inmates are excluded based on a 1965 law that was passed. That is ancient history as far as laws that are created, and nothing has changed since then. I had spoke with Senator McGuire about helping us because I knew that we were increasing our costs in jail medical. And approximately in 2010, the cost was $1 million. In 2022, when we approved the final contract, it was approximately 4.5 million. That's 450% increase in just about 12 years. That is a huge increase, and as we all know, healthcare continuously grows, is a major part of our overall economy, and it's difficult to keep figuring out how we're going to afford it. And just to remind the board, the majority of the 4.5 million dollars comes from general funds. And so I decided to try to figure out how is it that we can change how things are working so that we can get some reimbursements? There is zero reimbursement based on that 1965 Social Security Act law. We cannot get reimbursed for the care we do unless an inmate goes into a jail, into a hospital facility and is admitted. Admitted is a key word because you don't always get admitted right away in a hospital facility, and you're admitted for 24 hours, then your Medicaid can go ahead and kick in and cover the costs. Some of the issues that we're seeing in our jail is due to Brown versus Plata. Not sure if you all remember, but our Supreme Court made a decision that our jails offered a cruel and unusual punishment to our inmates because of overpopulation. And so the aim of that court case was to reduce our jail population as we've been seeing the outcome of. And one major point in the Supreme Court case identified a lackluster medical care being offered in our prisons. And so, and sorry, I said reduced jail population, I meant prison population in there. I apologize for the wrong word. But we're seeing a change in our jails. We used to be limited mostly to 365 days or less. Now we're seeing folks with longer than one year's worth of sentencing that are in our jail, which means that we are coping with the needs of the inmates, medical care a whole lot more than before. And this places extra burden on us to ensure that we meet our mandates, and I agree with those mandates. We should take care of the folks that are in our custody, but it's becoming more and more expensive. Cal AIM has changed some of these things a little bit. 90 days prior to release, Medicaid can now be reactivated. However, this is mainly to set up their release for continuity and follow-up to ensure that we reduce recidivism. This is not to say that we're going to provide all the medical care in the world to ensure that they're perfectly healthy as they leave. And in fact, there's very limited medical care services that are allowable under Cal AIM. Again, this is mainly made to connect folks with the right agencies and the right facilities in order to continue to get care. And in speaking with the Sheriff's Department and our captain of the jail, currently it's believed that the impacts on savings to the county will be negligible as far as Cal AIM goes and what it offers to our inmates. So there's two requests that are being made in the letter, which if the board chooses to change those requests, we can. The first request is to match what NACO, the National Association of Counties, is asking for. It's one of their main projects that they're working on, is to change it so that those who are in pre-trial, that are pre-trial inmates, continue to be covered by Medicaid. Right now, if you are in our jail facility, no matter if you're convicted or not, you are still considered an inmate. Therefore, that law pauses or strips the inmate individual of their Medicaid coverage. That is what NACO is looking to do, and I think we should definitely, at the very least, match that request. But I've expanded it, and I'm asking to request that all inmates be covered by Medicaid. I feel this is a very, this is an ancient law that doesn't follow what it is that we're attempting to get accomplished here, not just in Lake County, not just in the state of California, but in the United States, which is to ensure that everybody has health insurance to cover them, to ensure a certain level of quality of life, and to, now we have the deserving poor, because Medicaid typically covers those who are low-income and poor. And now we also have still the undeserving poor, meaning you don't get to have access to medical coverage. This is a very strange situation to still have in the 21st century. I think that we should request both, not just what NACO is asking for. And hopefully, what this does for us, it doesn't change the contracts that we have with jail medical, but it will change the fact that we can get reimbursed for the care that is provided. And so I do want to make a huge thanks to Matthew Rothstein. I drafted a letter and had it reviewed. Actually, I want to thank Crystal Marketan. I want to thank both our prior sheriff, Brian Martin, and our current sheriff, Rob Howe. I want to thank Jonathan Portney. They all reviewed the letter and provided some feedback, but Matthew Rothstein really took the letter and made it a much better document for us to submit, which a much more succinct request and ask on there. And so you've had, you have the letter in the attachments, you've had the chance to review it, and open for discussion or questions if there are any.
Well, obviously, this is a problem that's been compounding over time, but what was the original justification for this? Do you know? I mean, it's a completely different time, obviously, but.
To be honest, I don't know the original justification. I can see it as a way to save money, but maybe it was a little bit more than just that.
Okay.
And maybe one of the folks that I worked with can provide some better insight as to how we got there in the first place with the MIEP.
I don't think we have to put a lot of effort into it. I was just curious if anybody knew. Any other comments from the board? Any public input or comments from staff?
Sheriff Rob Howe, thank you. As Supervisor Sabatier said, this discussion predates my appointment. We have had some time to talk about it, and obviously, any ability to seek reimbursement for extensive medical costs would be a benefit to the county and benefit to the sheriff's office. I thought I'd just throw out a number. Captain Taylor got me with NACO's proposal to allow pre-trial inmates, that even that would be very beneficial. As of today, we have 199 inmates, 147 of them are unsentenced pre-trial people. So be significant. And Captain Taylor's here to answer any questions if you have them.
Good morning, Board. Just to add to Sheriff Martin's statements, some of the. Just out of habit.
Captain Taylor? Can you state your name, please?
Captain Norm Taylor. I wanted to include some information about the people that are held in the custody at the jail and their situations in regard to medical care. Oftentimes, people come into custody and are released a short period of time thereafter, after attending arraignment and some court processes. But because they may have had Medicare or Medicaid, that benefit is suspended immediately upon them coming into the jail. However, we don't have a way to unsuspend their benefit, so then we release them back into the community without the benefit. So I think that gets repeated quite regularly, even with people that are sentenced. So we see it on both sides of that coin, because oftentimes, the court process takes so long that when they appear in court and get sentenced, much of their time is already served, and they may only have a few more days left. So before we could actually communicate with social services, implement Cal AIM protocol, and get them re-enrolled, they're released in and back without any benefit. So that's certainly a consideration in this whole situation.
And the population that are not Lake County residents?
I haven't looked at that quite honestly. The large majority are Lake County residents.
Any other questions? Oh, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One, I thank you Supervisor Sabatier for bringing this forward, certainly supporting the letter, but it raises some questions, like if we don't get federal funding to get into more of a Medi-Cal reimbursement mode. It just goes back to realignment and the Supreme Court ruling, and it's like if the state can't run prison populations and medical care to keep their constitutional rights happy, and it's going to stay in the county's realm, I certainly think we should try to get Medi-Cal and Medicaid fixed. But barring that, you know, what are the constraints we're facing with right now? You know, in terms of the quality of medical care we're able to offer? And maybe a question for Crystal, if she's still watching, MISP, you know, are there non-Medi-Cal, non-Medicaid programs that are available for reimbursement? Or are they likewise precluded from that because they're inmates, you know, because they're in custody? So definitely, it'd be nice if the feds would step up. I'm not going to hold my breath on that. So it raises the question of whether the state has any other bright ideas. Having dumped this basically on us through realignment, and everything has come down to rain on us now, whether it's indigent defense or medical services in our jails. So is there anything other than Medicaid or Medi-Cal that can be brought to bear as financial resources to help provide services to our inmates?
In response to that, I don't know about the other programs. Looks like Crystal's available. But there's no doubt that this, we're realizing increased costs from realignment that maybe 10 years ago we didn't realize would be as heavy for us, but they just get larger and larger, and they compound as we continue to house inmates for extended periods.
Director Marketan?
Good morning again. I'd just like to start by saying we definitely support this request. We realize that it's, it would be a big system change, but I do have our resident expert here, Rachel Dillman, who I would like to pass it to, to kind of explain one.
Sure, yeah, we absolutely, like Crystal said, we do support this effort. There are some ways in which Medi-Cal can currently serve inmates. For instance, if an individual has Medi-Cal, when they enter the jail, we don't discontinue their benefits, we suspend their benefits until they are released, so they would have those benefits upon release. Some of the latest data shows about 70% of our inmates in Lake County jail do have Medi-Cal when they enter the jail, so that is suspended and then reinstated upon release. But that's upon release, that's not during their incarceration. As Supervisor Sabatier said, the only program that's available during incarceration is the Medi-Cal inmate eligibility program, which requires an overnight stay at the hospital where they're admitted, and then if the individual is eligible, Medi-Cal can pick up the cost. And then also the killing. And then also, the Kelling Program, the 90-day pre-release enrollment is actually starting in 2024. Right now, what we can do is enroll people upon their release, not prior to their release. So it would be great if we could do more for the inmates. I certainly support that, and if anybody has any questions about Medi-Cal, I'd be happy to try and address them.
Okay, any other questions from the Board?
I don't know if Melinda wanted to say something. Doesn't look like it.
Anything from the public?
I see no hands in Zoom.
Okay.
And I'll add something. The state of California is not in the worst-case scenario. Other states still continue to strip Medicaid from their inmates. Our state, just like many others, have decided that we just suspend at this moment in time. But I do believe that we need to ask for change and see how we can work through the systemic change, but I just feel like this is a cost that eventually we will have to take away what we provide to the communities in order to ensure that we continue to provide this as it's a mandate. So if we could find ways to make it more affordable for us and continue to provide the appropriate services, that's the reason the letter is here. And again, looking for, do we approve the letter as written with both requests? Or does the Board wish to request just what NACO is requesting, which is just pretrial inmate coverage?
I'm fine with both requests.
Okay.
We may as well.
Same for me.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, bring it back for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve, and in fact, I'm going to add a little bit. I want to make sure that we send this to Supervisor Gore in Sonoma County, since he is one of the executive board members of NACO and a representative of California. I want to make sure that he's aware of our letter. I did reach out to him, letting him know that this was on our agenda today. I want to make sure it goes to our state representatives so that they know what we're asking, and our federal representatives as well. And I think that should cover, and when I say federal, I mean both sides of the chamber. And so that will be, my motion is to approve the letter as submitted to eliminate the MIEP program and submit it to those I've just stated.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Captain. Our next item, 7.2, Review of Lake County Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System Policy, Behavioral Health Services. We have Director Metcalf.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Todd Metcalf, Director of Behavioral Health Services, thank you for letting us present this item. So, the Lake County Housing Continuum of Care requested this item come before your Board, pretty much to explain more about the continuum of care's policy around its coordinated entry system policy. The coordinated entry system is designed to streamline access to services for individuals experiencing homelessness. There are others here in Zoom, I see, that can help me explain this a little bit more, but that's kind of the 30,000-foot overview. But I see Scott Abbott and Melissa Koffer here, maybe they might want to add a little bit more to that.
Sure. Let me explain a little bit what coordinated entry is. Coordinated entry is a requirement that HUD has placed upon all the continuum of cares across the country. Continuum of care is, it's a system of being able to make referrals for housing. In the process of those referrals, referrals are prioritized based on assessment and, you know, what the person who's being assessed, what their circumstances are. Then from there, a priority list is created, also known as a by-name list, and then from that, as housing resources open, those referrals can be found the appropriate venue for services. So this obviously requires coordination across the community with different providers, different referral sources, and it's all tracked through our homeless management information system, which is critical in being able to do this. And Melissa here is our HMIS Administrator, and has also been working on this particular policy as well. I will turn the time over to her to let her kind of go over the basic features of it. Essentially, what we really wanted to do in presenting this to you is to give you the information of what we're doing as a COC, how we're embarking upon coordinated entry, and then to get, to solicit any feedback that you as supervisors or the public have on this process that we're putting together. Just for information, we did, we have been piloting this program with emergency housing vouchers, using that as kind of a smaller means to try and, you know, get this to work. We've used different access points, including our peer support centers, the homeless shelters that we've had, to be able to get this going. We also have contracted a coordinated entry central provider in Adventist Health, who will take those referrals and work with them to get them into the location where they need to go. But let me turn it over to Melissa, so she can give you the highlights of this policy.
Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa Kopp with Lake County Behavioral Health Services. I am really happy to present this policy. It's been something in the works for quite some time. We've been working weekly on this to try and ensure that we get it presented to the Continuum of Care Board and have this presented in a way that makes sense to the Board itself as well as the community. And a lot of the information in the policy revolves around how coordinated entry works, who is responsible for certain processes within the coordinated entry system. And a lot of this ends up revolving around the task flow through HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System, as well as the coordinated entry operator. And the biggest purpose in the policy is really just to kind of get down to the details in how the process will end up working, and the roles and responsibilities for the continuum of care, the HMIS system, Homeless Management Information System, as well as the providers within the community. A lot of the policy also revolves around, as Scott was mentioning, the vulnerability assessment. Anybody who ends up going to an access point to be entered into the coordinated entry system will end up having the vulnerability assessment to ensure where they end up falling on the prioritization list. And the whole purpose of the coordinated entry system really is to take those who are most vulnerable and get them into the required, or the needed services that they have within the homeless management information system. And sometimes that may be that they end up being referred immediately to a housing navigator to ensure that they end up finding adequate housing that's safe and sustainable. Other times, it may be that they're at risk of losing their housing, so then they end up with support services through the coordinated entry system. With the combination that we have with the Pathways Hub, it ends up putting a unique twist on it, because we're able to provide more wraparound services for anybody within the homeless management systems of care, and really give them more of an opportunity to be able to attain sustainable housing and meet all of the other needs that they end up having that keep them sustainably housed. So within this policy, it really goes into and dives into a lot of the responsibilities with the coordinated entry operator, which is Adventist Health for the Pathways Hub, and the responsibilities revolving around the continuum of care, and the coordination that we all have throughout the county to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our homeless population.
Apologize for the length of the policy, it's very inclusive. We tried to put, you know, include as much as we could in there. We built this through a committee within the COC, the HMIS Coordinated Entry Committee built it, and plus, we received a lot of consultation from our HUD technical assistance service provider, and also another consultant, which has a lot of experience in creating HMIS and coordinated entry systems. And so as a result of that, we have a rather large, but also very inclusive policy. As I mentioned, the general idea is to solicit any feedback that you might have, we provide this information, any feedback you have, and then from here, the plan is for, you know, once the feedback has been given, is that we will adopt this policy by the end of the month. Additionally, at the end of the month, we will be doing, we will start be doing some systematic training of the policy and to fully get the coordinated entry system fully operational.
Thank you, Melissa and Scott. Appreciate that.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Now, thank you for bringing that to us. Quick question, it says here, talks a lot about training for those that want to be access points, training here, I'm reading, under the Professional Development Program. The COC will provide training opportunities at least annually to organizations and/or staff people at organizations that serve at access points. And so that, to me, sounds logical, that we want to make sure that if somebody wants to be an access point, that they're trained appropriately so that we can get the right information. But do you have an outreach in the sense of making sure that those that are out and about in our community, which can be anything from our law enforcement to, all the way down to maybe our faith organizations that have access to the community and know what people are going through? Do they have like a quick and easy type of like business card or information guide that they might be able to hand out to ensure that people can reach an access point? Just because I know I've seen, at least at the jail, there used to be like a quick index card that they would be given upon release of all the services that are available. I just want to make sure that this is also a simple process to connecting people to the access points, because that's the important part. If we can get them to the access points, then things can happen, but if they are talking to individuals who are not quite certain where those access points are, then we may have lost, and somebody may have fallen through the cracks.
Marketing the coordinated interest system is definitely one of our goals to have. Having cards like that, I think, is a really good idea. I see Melissa writing that down. So, anything that we can do, I think, to get the word out about this, our committee, HMIS Coordinated Entry Committee, has talked about how to do some more marketing to get the word out about this. It is going to be extremely important to be able to make sure that people know about the system so that they can make those referrals for people that they come across.
Thank you.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, I just, I had two questions, but the other one was answered after reading through it a little more. But the only question I have is under race category. It doesn't have a Latinx representation, is there a reason why? There's a, I think it's on page, oops, went too far. Three.
Yeah, I'm scrolling through the policy right now to see where that's located.
I'm wondering if typically, that's ethnicity and not race, usually kind of a breakdown?
I didn't want to go on a soapbox.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, that's correct. So, the way that HUD is set up, when it comes to the Latinx and the Hispanic population, that would be considered for ethnicity and not race.
Okay.
It's a federal standard that even behavioral health has within our collecting demographics.
So, what are they, what percentage are they under on this beacon?
It could be a combination. A lot of the individuals that we have surveyed throughout the county, within the homeless systems of care, they, the way that we end up wording the question, whenever the race question comes up, is which of these races do you identify with most? And the majority of them either choose between being white or indigenous. So it's probably a combination of the two of those.
All right. Is that something that the state requires, or is that just something we thought of in these policies?
I'm not sure if it's something that the state requires. It's something that we kind of just started doing here in Lake County to try and ensure that we're being sensitive to those that we're interviewing and questioning, or having, surveying what their demographics are.
All right, I'm just, I'm not Latinx, however, if I was Latinx, I would look at this and wonder where I'm at. So, that's just my thing.
Well, sometimes there's a follow-up question, Hispanic and non-Hispanic.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
And so, do we have that part as part of the survey?
The way that it's set up in the homeless management information intake, we actually ask for their ethnicity before we ask for their race, because we are working on being sensitive to that population.
And so it is collected, the data?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, it doesn't make me feel better, but I guess that's how we do it, so.
You're not going to feel halfway?
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I appreciate this draft document. As I'm reading through it, I'm really, the vision is there, but I'm really struggling putting the hats on the people that are going to be delivering these services. There's a lot to process in here. There's a, some implication that there's a centralized CE system here, but it doesn't really say, well, is that BH? Is that some of our other healthcare providers? There's incredible amounts of sensitive personal medical information that may be exchanged in these things. So I guess kudos for having the most expansive vision here, but I would really struggle in taking a look at this and saying, who's on first? Who is responsible for making sure these entries are coordinated among the agencies? What is the common platform? What is the training of the various people that are making these decisions? On page 11, I'm seeing that case conferencing could include executive committee members. I don't know what level of training would be needed for housing navigators, housing providers, veteran service providers. So depending on the case and the person involved, it looks like any number of member agencies could end up doing the initial screening, but I don't know how that would end up getting fed to the, you know, the master CES operator, I guess is the phrase I'm tuning in on here. So can you clarify, to the extent possible, the umbrella role of the CES operator, and then how we take these various member agencies when we're dealing with really case-specific placements, and ensuring they proceed expeditiously, but also in a compliant and a way that is sensitive to their particular needs? Because I don't know for a fact if we have multiple access points, whose access points are they? Are they BH? Are they partner agencies? Are we on the hook for funding these access points? So, again, kudos to the vision, but if I were to implement this draft, I would really struggle out the gate, and maybe that's because you guys have better background knowledge on this.
The way that the access points were, they are through the Lake County Behavioral Health Peer Support Centers, but also the Harbor-on-Maine, which is through Redwood Community Services. We also have Hope Center as an access point, and then Lake County... We also have Hope Center as an access point, and then Lake County Office of Education for their school-aged children is also an access point. They are the only agencies at this point in time that are able to refer anybody into the coordinated entry system. Once they end up being entered into the coordinated entry system, that information is, that information ends up sending an email to our coordinated entry operator. This information is all gathered within the homeless management information system. Everyone with a license for that system is required to have security and privacy training. And the coordinated entry operator gathers the information from the homeless management information system and starts to help move the person through the process. The operator is the one who is responsible for sending out referrals to partner agencies to ensure that the individuals who are entering into coordinated entry are able to receive the services that they need. When it comes to case conferencing, it really becomes more of an individual who is already set up into coordinated entry, who has already been referred to services. And anyone working with that individual within the homeless management systems of care comes together to discuss with that individual what other needs that they may have to ensure that they end up keeping sustainable housing. So, that's kind of like a quick overview of how the responsibilities work within what was mentioned. Supervisor Green.
Okay. So, by any other name, the CE operator is BH, and the various functions that are outlined in this draft document are already existing programs and services, again, by any other name. So, if you're the primary CE operator is BH, then I'm either assuming that you're fully funded and have all the functions that you need to implement this, or I'm missing something. It sounds like you are, you have an internal understanding that you are the CE operator is BH, and you're going to have primary role in handling this information. Is that correct?
Well, we've actually contracted that central operator out to Adventist Health. At the same time, we contracted our Pathways Hub to Adventist Health. So, they're doing both. We really wanted to do that because the functions are so similar. You know, the central operator for coordinated entry focuses solely on housing, but the Pathways Hub focuses on other needs that the person might have, such as medical or behavioral health or any, you know, other services that our community-based organizations may offer in our community. So, the nice thing is, as Melissa was kind of describing, you know, we, when we get someone who needs housing, we'll also be able to see what other needs they might have as well. And the reverse is true. You might have someone who needs behavioral health, and they come into that system, then we can also see if, you know, if they have housing needs as well. So, it's going to be a really neat system, I think. You know, it can really be a game-changing type of system, I think, when we get it really fully functional. We've always talked about that we, as community-based organizations and then others, that a lot of times we feel like we're kind of in silos. You know, we'll make a referral, and we're not even sure what happens to that referral. And, you know, a system like this, it's made up of both housing and other services, to be able to take those referrals and be able to track them, be able to help the people through the referrals, and referring agency can understand what happened to the person they referred, is really going to be neat. And it's really going to make, I think, you know, much better services for those who need services. It's going to make it much more efficient. So, it's, you know, I know we weren't originally supposed to talk about the Pathways Hub. We plan to do that on a different presentation, but they are tied together, and it's for a really good reason. And I'm sure some of you might remember me talking about it before, but it's a system, and it's just now getting fully off the ground, both aspects of it.
Okay. Any other comment?
Yeah, just one more, and I don't mean to harp on it, but I think I understand this better now. So, the, with the categories that I was talking about earlier, it's recorded through the HMIS system, and so, your policies are just matching how they ask you to, okay, I just figured that out, sorry. It's just unfortunate that the numbers for Latin X are basically enhancing other demographics rather than being represented themselves. I mean, we have a La Vos Center here, you know, it just, I don't know. It's something that we probably need to take up at a higher level, so thank you for answering that.
Supervisor Spatier.
And I think we can make a request out of that, because the information is collected. If we can find out what that information is, so we can go ahead and dissect a little further what the race category is as far as ethnicity, then that would help us better understand what the client record really is versus just what we've been provided here. So, if it's possible to make that available to us so that we have that and we can be transparent about that information, it's already there, and so, that would be provided.
Okay. Anyone from the public?
There is a hand from T. Pierce, Health Roads.
Hi, everybody. You know, you know who it is.
State your, I'm sorry, state your name, please, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Teddy Pierce. I actually drafted the policy that you're talking about, and I just wanted to clarify a few points for the board. First of all, in regard to race and ethnicity, those are two separate data elements that come through the HUD data manual, and those are easy to compile. The reason I only put the race values in was because I was comparing to National Census Traffic Data, and that didn't call that out. So, that's a very easy thing to drop in at any one time. It's also found every year on your point and time count results. HUD separates that on the pit count. And the second thing I was going to say is, you know, this is the North Star kind of document. This is looking at perfection with all the resources and the flows. Any community that does coordinated entry starts and puts an iterative process in place, so they improve as they go along. Folks have been doing this CHV flow for about a year and a half now, and it's worked very well. And I think a lot of the training is set and secure, so this isn't brand new to Lake County. This is just a build-out of something that's already been going on. So, I just wanted to allay any fears about how difficult this might be. It will grow over time, and I just wanted everybody to feel confidence in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the board if there's no further.
No further hands in Zoom.
So, we've given our feedback, and we really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you talking.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 7.3. Consideration, I'm sorry. Oh, it is 10 o'clock on the dot. Okay, you're right. We will reopen item 6.2 if that's what the board would like.
Yes.
Yes.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board for action.
Since there was no action taken for 6.2, and it was just a presentation, do we need a motion?
No, there's no action to be taken here, so I don't.
We just can open it?
Reopening public comment.
Okay. We'll reopen public comment for 6.2.
I'll motion to open it, just in case.
Just in case.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll reopen.
Problem solved.
6.2, our presentation designating the month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month in Lake County. And we did have a presentation read earlier by Supervisor Green, and we have representatives from the Red Cross right now. So, if you'd like to come up and give your comments, we have three minutes, and you can give your name.
Thank you. I am Shannon Kimball-Aoth with the American Red Cross, and we don't have a formal presentation that we would like to make. Simply to say that we appreciate your proclamation and the work that we are able to do to partner together to serve our most vulnerable populations and citizens in time of disaster. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them, however.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Spatier.
Not a question, but I just, since I have the opportunity, I'll say that there is something that we typically flies under the radar. Large disasters, obvious, they're there, we all experience it. But the individual family house fires, I think that a lot of times we forget how important Red Cross is in providing the services to get those people housed and try to get them back on their feet as quickly as possible. And I know that that's happened quite a lot throughout our county, and I appreciate every single time that it occurs, because it seems to be, from my perspective, an automatic, smooth-flowing thing. From your perspective, maybe a little different, but the appreciation is immense for that type of work. It's not just the large disasters, it's the small ones that individual families and individuals also go through. So, very thankful for that.
Thank you, supervisor. Is that all?
We sang the praise earlier.
We missed you singing our praise. I apologize. We did not know to be here at what time.
Well, thank you for making the time and coming.
Thank you.
Would you like to make us a comment? Oh.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Actually, I would like to invite, Gabby is my coworker with the American Red Cross, and she has responded to the house fires. And like myself, I work only in disasters, so it may be that she could add something.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here today. My name is Gabriela Perez-Alvarazin. I do appreciate you all letting us be here. I am a transplant to Lake County, but I am growing really fond of this place in less than a month, thanks to the warmth of all the people that I've been meeting here. And we actually respond every eight minutes to home fires, and that is our main priority to be, to attend to those families, vulnerable individuals. And this is a big disaster for them every time it happens, so I appreciate you mentioning it and actually giving it the importance it needs. Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, then we'll close this item back up. And now, we can go on to item 7.3. Consideration of the following advisory board appointments. We have the Cobb Municipal Advisory Council, and we have Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee. For the Cawbury Council, Darlene Warner was elected at the January meeting to serve on the council, and we wanted to wait to appoint her until we had heard from the council itself, and so, they have spoken, and I'm more than happy if someone wants to make the motion to appoint her. But I will ask anybody if there's, if there's public comment on this item.
No comments in Zoom.
We'll bring it back to the board, then.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to appoint Darlene Warner to the Cawbury Area Council.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. We have three applicants for the Fish and Wildlife Committee, and as we all know, this has been a difficult committee to seat and make sure that there is a quorum so they can have meetings. We did have these three. We have suggestions from staff on how to appoint them to different areas. So, Nellie Dorn is interested in the agriculture seat. Michelle Scully is interested in land conservation, because she does have, I think it's her master's in ecology. And then, we were advised this morning that Andy Scully, who is put on his application that he is an avid hunter and fisher, could fill the role as Fish and Wildlife Conservation. So, those are the recommendations from staff. I would just like to open it up for board discussion on how everyone feels about those Supervisor Spatier.
I will make a controversial statement. I am not going to deny these folks, but I want to make sure that this stays focused on what Fish and Wildlife is regarding. There was one that was denied last week or two weeks ago. I really do not want to see this get politically driven in any direction based on any specific topic, and I hope that we stay professional in the purpose of Fish and Wildlife Advisory. Just want to make that statement.
Any other comments?
I think for me, I'm fine with the appointments. I just, Fish and Wildlife Conservation, to me, is somebody that actually works on the preservation of fish or has like one of those type of degrees in. So, I think an avid fisherman, in my opinion, doesn't count for that, but, I mean, I'll go with it if the board wishes.
I agree with you. And we can open it up for the public.
Is there a position for the general public, though, in that district? Maybe that can...
It says general public, one general public, one from each district.
And I, I know that District 5 seat is filled, and I know the District 4 seat is someone who's been active with the committee for many years, but Joanna, has he been reappointed?
Was that Bobby Dutcher?
No, retentive.
Yep, working on it.
Okay. So, then, we would be looking at two seats for, I'm sorry, we'd be looking at the two applicants, Nellie Dorn and Andy Scully, for the ag seat. If we wanted to keep the seat open for Fish and Wildlife Conservation, if we have someone that is employed in that field.
Right, yeah, I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Unless others aren't. I see. Supervisor Green?
Well, I mean, if we want to, you know, what we have in hand versus speculate what could come in later, if there was concern over the seats, I would suggest just swapping out. Maybe Mr. Scully would be the ag seat, and Nellie would be the other one, since her application expresses a more, a direct interest in Fish and Wildlife Preservation. So, I think just based on the face of the applications, if there's concern, I would just swap them out, I think. And Andy would be fine for ag, and Nellie would be fine for the other seat.
I don't think that was the, I think that's a completely different direction there.
Yeah, because I think it says she has an interest in preserving native fish and wildlife, but I'm not seeing.
Rather than the experience of or being a part of.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm in favor of what was proposed by Supervisor Crandall, looking at, just to kind of split it up, so we don't have, I'm assuming they're related, but Nellie Dorn for ag and Michelle Scully for land conservation, I think, is kind of where I'm leaning at this moment in time for those two positions.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah. I did open this one up for the public, right? Did I?
I don't believe you did.
I don't, okay.
But there's nobody here.
Is there anyone in the Zoom room who would like to give comment on these appointments?
Even for the, after the call for comments, there are no comments in the Zoom.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board, then.
And they're in your district, so if you don't mind my making the motion, Madam Chair, I move to approve Nellie Dorn as the agricultural representative and Michelle Scully as the land conservation representative in the Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we had two more seats filled on that committee. Item 7.3. Opposed? Okay, we have two more seats filled on that committee. Great. Item 7.4, discussion and consideration of potential, oh, funding for Mike, I'll read it, but then we're going to pull it, or should I just pull it?
Why don't we open it up, and then I'll make a statement and...
Okay, sounds good.
The board.
Then I will finish. Discussion and consideration of potential funding source for Mike Marsh EMS Consulting in the amount of $20,000 for emergency ambulance strike team support through Regional Disaster Management Services Association. Resource order request to decompress two overwhelmed hospitals during emergency proclamation winter storm. And I will turn this over to CIO Parker.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I spoke with Director Portney yesterday and recommended that we move this to next week's agenda. It needs some further vetting with regard to the financial recommendation.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Public?
No hands in Zoom.
Bring it back, and we'll talk about it next week. Thank you. Item 7.5, consideration of approval to waive the 900-hour limit for certain janitorial positions within the Department of Social Services. Director Markatan.
Good morning. Normally, this is on the consent agenda, but I do have our administrative deputy Kelly Page here today, and she knows a lot more about this particular contract than I do. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Loud and clear.
Board, I'm Kelly Page. I'm the Deputy Director for Admin under Social Services. We're coming to you with our request to waive the 900-hour limit for four different janitorial positions within our department. These are folks that are getting close to a 600-hour right, right about now. So in order to not go over our 999 hours that we are allowed to have them work, and we would like to get that 99-hour increase for just those four positions. And we do have the funds to cover the increases.
Okay. Anything from the board? Anything from the public?
Nothing in Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the waiver of the 900-hour limit for certain janitorial positions with the, within the Department of Social Services.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll go back to our consent items. We can start with 5.1.
You got to read it first.
Yes, I'm here.
Sorry.
Okay. A, approved letter of support for Clear Lake Ferry Service feasibility study and authorize named board members to sign. And B, approved letter of support for the Lake County Wildfire evacuation and preparedness plan and authorize named board members to sign. And C, approved letter of support for the Lake County Zero Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Plan and authorize named board members to sign. Supervisors, Vice Chair Simon and Sabatier.
So thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you, want to thank Admin for helping me get it on the board. I think could have done a better job communicating with them what I was looking for. So these support letters had come to us in an email through the LTA and APC Board. Obviously, we're looking to move forward with the support letter. You see myself and Supervisor Sabate's name on the letter, but the changes I would like to make today is I would like to add the Chair of the Board of Supervisors for the signatory page, or the signatory line. And then I would also, in each one of the three support letters, I'd like to add the Lake County Board of Supervisors would like to submit a letter of support for the Lake County Area Planning Councils, all kind of making that change on all three at the beginning, that the Lake County Board of Supervisors would like to provide a letter of support for these three grants.
So change the first sentence?
Yes.
Supervisor Spatier.
Just a quick clarification, we're deleting the signatures that are there at the bottom and replacing it with the.
With the Chair's signature of the board.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other comments? Public input?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay. We'll bring it back, and it looks like three separate motions.
Yes. So Madam Chair, for item number one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Supervisors a letter of support for the Clear Lake Ferry Service feasibility study and authorize the Chair to sign.
With amendments.
With the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, I'd like to approve a letter of support with Board of Supervisors for Lake County Wildfire evacuation and preparedness plan and authorize the Chair to sign with amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to approve a letter of support by Lake County Board of Supervisors for the Lake County Zero Emission Vehicle Infrastructure Plan and authorize the Board Chair to sign with amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We will move on to 5.3, approve the bylaws of the East Region Town Hall Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, and so Supervisor Sabatier contacted me yesterday and noticed a couple things that I realized also were on the past bylaws as well. So it's a little bit of housekeeping here. Talked with the record keeper over at the Earth, and she's understanding that these will be changed. It's just the numbering, it went from three to five, and so we're just going to move those numbers up. Also, for clarification, County Council Anita Grant had helped me look at where states notice for all regular meetings of Earth must be posted at least 72 hours. In the bylaws, it says for a special meeting as well. So it's separated, and also the notice shall be posted with the physical meeting location on the County Lake website at least 24 hours prior. Special meetings may be scheduled at a regular meeting of the Earth Committee by majority vote, or may be scheduled by the Earth Chair with the concurrence of District 3 Supervisor. And those are all basically to coincide with the basic law. So they were okay with that, and with that, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, any other comments? Supervisor Spatier.
Just a quick question, no changes to Article 7 amendments?
Let's see. No, no, there's none for that. That's, as I spoke with County Council, it's fine.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
No, I get it. And we talked about that as well.
Okay. Anything from the public?
Yeah, a quick question.
No hands from the public.
Okay, yes.
Just a quick question on the amendments. The last sentence, District Supervisor shall agree, that, that could be read two ways. So I'm just questioning what the intent was. Meaning whatever Earth comes up with as a proposal, the District Supervisor is bound to agree to, or that the District Supervisor, in essence, has veto rights and, and basically has to sign off on the amendment that the committee.
Well, we, we would have to, I have to agree to bring it here, but we can, as a board, say nah, no, right?
You don't have to agree with it, but you're going to bring it.
Yeah, shall bring it forward. And then we, as a board, would, would, is that how it goes?
I just didn't know how to read that sentence. I'm sorry.
That's who I thought it was. But if they wrote that in the bylaws, then I'd have the opportunity, but it's not written in there.
What you, what you, Anita Grant, County Council. What you may want to do with that last sentence, just for clarification, is to state that any such amendment shall be submitted to the Board of Supervisors with concurrence to do so by the District 3 Supervisor. So then it's just being submitted to the Board is where the concurrence comes. I think that's more in line with Supervisor Green's question, and it does offer clarity.
Okay.
There was one additional section, if, if I may.
Oh, yes, yes.
With regard to Article 3, there was some remaining language with regard to the, Article 2, rather, there was some remaining language with regard to facilitate residential, resident participation. And that sentence was changed to facilitate resident participation. When a special meeting is determined to be necessary to address a particular topic, the Earth Committee may determine to cancel a regular meeting scheduled to occur that same month. However, whenever reasonably possible, a special meeting should only be held in addition to the regularly scheduled Earth meetings. And the point of that language was to make it clear that a special meeting does not actually replace a regular meeting. It, it is in addition to, most generally.
Okay.
That works.
Action.
Yes, we closed, okay, so I motion to approve the bylaws, or accept the bylaws with additions and corrections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 5.6. Yeah. Okay, 5.6, approve data sharing agreement between Partnership Health Plan of California and Lake, and County of Lake Behavioral Health Services, and authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign. Supervisor Spatier.
And so I received an email saying that my question was cleared. I had a lingering question that I needed a response to, and so I do not have any more issues with 5.6. My issue was just to make sure that this had gone before the COC. That way, the county is not approving something that the COC has not approved, since this is on behalf of the COC that we are doing so. And so I received an email saying that that had been accomplished and ready to move forward.
Okay, any comments from the board? Anybody from the public?
I see no hands in the Zoom room.
Okay, bring it back for action.
There's Scott right there. I don't know if that matters.
Oh.
I'm ready to take action.
Okay. I think he's got his questions answered, so we'll just take action, if that's okay with you.
But we're, we're one with that. That's great.
Figure you would be. Okay.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the data sharing agreement between Partnership Health Plan of California and the County of Lake Behavioral Health Services and authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will move on to 5.10. Approve continuation of a local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer. Supervisor Spatier.
And this has been brought up multiple times, and we said we were waiting for February 28th to pass on through. That has occurred. The emergency at the state level is gone. And from all other conversations, if we keep the 5.14, which is continuation of a local emergency due to COVID-19 under the OES, that reimbursements can continue, and always looking to diminish our emergencies rather than continue them if they're not needed. And so today, looking to let this one lapse and go through their 45 days, I think it is, or it was 30 days, I forget. But to basically conclude, just like the state one.
Do we have our PHO?
I did send Director, not the PHO, I did send Director Portney a text, letting him know this item was coming out.
And I did speak with them briefly via email about this.
And are they here?
Yeah, good morning, Board. I can't really, I can't really give recommendations either way, since the Public Health Officer determination, and technically, we have an interim, more of a medical advisor. So I don't, not sure if this is at Board's discretion, or if a PHO has to rescind. I think that was the holdup last time, based on my conversations with other counties and discussion with the Board. So I would imagine that would be to your discretion, how to delegate the rescinding of the emergency proclamation, since the PHO was directed to establish the proclamation. I would, my best guess would be, a health officer would have to rescind based on the data. Sorry, couldn't be more helpful, but that's just the information I have. Thank you.
Anita Grant, County Council. The PHO did declare the medical emergency. However, your board ratified it and continued it, so the power is yours. Obviously, you'd want some information from your PHO with regard to any pending medical emergency issues, but the action is yours to take.
Supervisor Green?
Not enough to be a PHO question, right back to Director Portney, but the main purpose of this is to capture reimbursement for any ongoing expenses. And I guess what we would all want to hear is like, we're not incurring any more hard costs responding to the local health emergency. And I would believe that would probably be accurate, but I don't want to state that or assume that mistakenly. So do we have any information from Admin or Health Services, or just what the status is of any out, potential outstanding claims that we would lose out on reimbursement if we took this out, out today?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you.
We do have the other one from OES.
But yes, thank you. What I recommend, because I can't answer those questions either, is that I reach out to the PHO and have those answers prepared for next week.
Okay. Supervisor Spatier.
I, I think that the conversation, and this is a conversation I've had in the past, be good to get a review on that same conversation, but is to check in with our auditor controller as well, since that's where reimbursements go through. But without a state emergency, I would suspect that we cannot incur any further costs that will be reimbursed in the future. We only can get reimbursed for costs that have already been incurred. And so I'm comfortable with moving forward, but we'll, we'll see how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, if we can hear from the PHO and the auditor, and, and bring it back next week, I'm good with that. Anyone else?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Then last, we have 5.18. A, approve mortuary services agreement between the County of Lake and Chapel of the Lakes. Mort, what?
Just a quick point of order. If we don't approve, or does?
Oh, right, sorry.
Runs out of time, does it automatically expire?
Do we have time for next, do we need to re?
I don't know when the last time was.
Okay, so we have to do it. Okay. Sorry. Motion? Do we have a action on this then?
Are you talking about the 5.10?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we have, do we have to open it back up?
Yeah.
No action was taken.
No action was taken, so we'll open 5.10 back up. Yes, sorry.
It doesn't actually matter if there's action taken on the item. It is the opening back up or the reconsideration. That's the action, and that's what justifies the need for a motion.
Okay.
Oh, Anita Grant, County Council.
Thanks. Okay, a motion to reopen 5.10?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any public comment on that?
No hands.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Well, reopening, approve the continuation of a local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer.
And I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the continuation and come back next week with further information as to whether or not we need to continue it in the future of, of a local health emergency related to the 2019 coronavirus, COVID-19, as proclaimed by the Lake County Public Health Officer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion passes. Now we will move on to 5.18.
And 5.18 has been pulled until next week.
Right, pulled until next week. Okay, so now we can Okay, so now we can go to calendars. Right, one more thing.
4.2.
Oh, yes. Please. Okay, item.
Calendars for that.
Yeah, we'll do calendars after our extra items. 4.2, consideration of extra agenda item. And B, consideration to hold special meetings in March 2023 to interview County Council candidates in closed session and select a date. CAO Parker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you're well aware, we canceled our special meeting yesterday for the interviews regarding the County Council, and I would like, with your permission, to set aside another date. We provided dates Friday, March 10th, and Monday, March 20th for your consideration. I would like to recommend on the Friday, March 10th, if we did the afternoon as opposed to the morning.
I can do the 20th. I cannot do the 10th. Unless that is the will of the Board, and I will have to change my schedule.
10th, I can do the 10th. What time you said, afternoon?
On the 10th, yes. I would recommend the 1 to 5 p.m.
I can do that. And you said on the 20th, Supervisor Sabatier, I can make the 20th happen too, either way. I have something in the morning, but if we do afternoon, if we have to do morning, I can do morning. Like you said, I'll make it work.
What about down here?
Yeah, I can, Friday, the 10th, I can make it to 1 to 5, and then obviously, on the second one, we already said the 17th, right? Or we set that aside, so we're covered?
Yes.
On that, okay.
Yeah, the 17th still stands.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple of things I can move from the afternoon of the 10th. I feel like we should probably try and get it done this week, if you can make it work. Okay. So this Friday afternoon from 1 to 5, and then keep the 17th if we need it. Any comments from the public?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, bring it back to the Board.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a special meeting on March 10th, Friday, March 10th, 2023, 1 to 5 p.m. Is that correct, the time?
1 to 5, yes.
1 to 5 p.m. for the purpose of interviewing for County Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the next extra item be 4.3? And I'm not exactly sure. Let me read it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, do I just read the subject? The necessity for the extra closed session item?
Oh, you don't want to discuss the wrong title for the, for the extra item. Just please delete closed session.
The Collier Avenue, okay.
Yes, this is for the.
Collier Avenue Housing Project Loan Documents.
Yes, indeed, a grant, County Council. These are coming at you at the, truly the 11th hour as documents are flying and adjustments are being made to those documents. The county's been alerted to the fact that the loan document is going to increase by That is not a huge sum in the scheme of things, but it's beyond what your Board previously agreed before. I believe it's necessary for you to be aware of that and agree to the re-execution of the documents where that increased amount occurs. So you will see that when I say unrelated documents to the loan, the construction loan agreement, you're talking about it appears in a promissory note. It also appears on the trust documentation, and there may be. Okay, and there may be other related documents, but those would be the primary ones. And again, the only change would be to adjust it by that amount, which would then be $1,471,414 according to RCHDC's calculation. So we do have those. Additionally, although your Board had in 2021 approved two resolutions that relate to the authorization to participate in the No Place Like Home program and also to the non-competitive allocation award under the No Place Like Home program, the county has been asked to also seek your Board's approval for the, for 2023 for ostensibly the same thing. The initial drafts had included the, under Section 2 of each of these drafts, that it would be the Behavioral Health Director who would be authorized, but in keeping it consistent with what you've done in 2021 where it was the Board Chair, I've adjusted that to be the Board Chair. Also, because, because of transitions, et cetera, in behavioral health, it's best to have a certain place, and some of these documents, of course, are going to have to or may necessitate review by the full Board, depending upon what happens. So, so those two resolutions, as, as shown, are also presented for your Board. So as I said, if your Board will approve the, the adjustment in the loan document and agree to authorize the Chair to sign the loan agreement and all directly related documents to effectuate that change, and then offer each of the two 2023 resolutions as listed in numbers 2 and 3 on the very brief Board memo.
So basically, it's already been approved. We just have to adjust it.
Your Board's previously signed all the loan documents, but that was at a different amount, and it just didn't seem appropriate to me to switch in a number, so it's come back to you to approve.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the public? Oh, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a question. The sections underneath the now therefore be resolved, are any of those sections new to these documents that were not available on the previous resolutions for the prior years?
No, not to my knowledge.
So I, I, I'm not, I just, I guess, want to have a conversation. I don't know if Behavioral Health is here, but we are committing to 20 years of supportive services available to No Place Like Home tenants, and we'll coordinate the provision of or referral to other services.
Yes, it's my understanding is the grant requires a commitment of services, at least one of them, and the documents themselves originated were sent by Behavioral Health, so I would certainly assume that they have read and reviewed the contents.
I'm just thinking, what does 20 years from now look like? And those services will be vastly different than what this might say. I, I, I'm feeling like, or similar services, or, I don't know. I guess we could always amend it when things change.
Well, if your Board has questions about the resolutions, I, I think those points are taken. In the scheme of what's necessary for the closing, which is occurring now, the loan documents have to be re-signed. So I would suggest, I, I, the 2021 resolutions were already approved by your Board for these same purposes, so there may not be, if you want to get more information, your Board could determine that to offer the resolutions for 2023 contingent upon their urgency to the closing. And so if they're not, as it turns out to be urgent, then they can come back to you next week. But the, the loan amount absolutely does have to be corrected today if your Board wishes to move forward.
Yeah, and I have no problems with dealing with the loan amounts. I, this is all, with this new level of information, I have questions.
Certainly.
For Behavioral Health on what does it mean to commit for 20 years to something that, I will say, it's not an easy way to provide those services already. We strive to do our best, so I'm not against it. I just, I have some question marks.
So what it says, and yeah, it would be nice if, mental health supportive services, the county will make available, I'd like shall. But that's just me. On the same section, sorry, Section 4. Is that, is that a big deal?
Will and shall is not, is not a huge deal, but it's a good catch because words do matter. The, the language, as I said, is substantially the same to the 2021 agreement. However, again, if your Board, if your Board feels more comfortable with these resolutions getting clarity, they came through the Behavioral Health Department, so again, I can only assume that they would have read and reviewed them. I can't, I can't guarantee that.
No, I just know that there's, there's, there's a lot of folks that have been talking to me about this specific project, and this has been going on for years, this, this project. So I know that there's been some inclination that this has just barely taken place. Of course, been looking through it, it's been going on since 2009. And talking to a couple of other folks, they were concerned with the mental health services, supportive services, and to ensure that that was taken care of. That's why I wanted to put shall.
And I do understand, sir. If, if your Board wants to put those over, since you are having a special meeting on the 10th, these could actually be added to that if need be, if clarification can come. As I said, I'm not, I'm not, these resolutions are probably not as integral to the actual closing process, from what I understand. So while I don't believe they can necessarily wait until next Tuesday, they could certainly wait till Friday, I think. But not the monetary, the increase in the contract amounts and all of those documents, of which there are several, all have to be adjusted and re-signed, so.
I'm assuming they haven't been re-signed yet.
Okay.
And I guess, just to speak freely, apologize, to speak freely, I know that this is already, it's a non-recourse loan, so if things go astray, we don't get our money and possibly lose the property in trying to figure out how to regain any of the funds that we lost. And to say that we're committing to 20 years, like, I almost would feel better if it said something along that the county shall make mental health supportive services available to each project's NPLH tenant to the best of its abilities for at least 20 years, just because, I, I just don't want to put something in there where now we're not fulfilling our end of the contract because we're unable to. That, that's, that's where I'm, I'm stuck, is I don't want to commit to something that I don't know what the plan is, and I don't know if we're going to be capable of making that happen, and there doesn't seem to be any out whatsoever.
And I believe that a commitment to provide those supportive services is an integral component of the funding. However, I would feel much more comfortable if I had complete confirmation of all of those things. And so if I can put this on for the 10th special meeting, which is appropriate for this type of, of arrangement, and if your Board would just move forward with the first request today, which is the increase in the loan funding so that those documents can be re-executed by the Chair. And I'll bring that back with, with information that will be of assistance on the second and third items.
Okay.
Can I offer a suggestion unless, I don't know if Vice Chair Simon had a.
I want to hear your suggestion. Go ahead.
I'd say, let's go, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, but I need a presentation from Behavioral Health to better understand what the plan is. And I think that kind of fits with what Supervisor Crandall was saying, is to make sure that we're public and open about what, what is our plan for this, and this commitment, I think, requires a presentation to ensure that we understand what is expected of us and how we're going to meet that expectation. And so I don't want to add something on the 10th when I think that that could already be a full day. And if we can bring that back at a later, regular meeting for Behavioral Health to make that presentation, I'd be okay with that.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, so from what I understand, what you're saying is we're going to approve all three moving forward with the presentation to be coming in the next 30 days or some, somewhere in that area. I'm okay with that. You know, obviously, committed to start to move this thing forward. If we can get anything done, I completely agree, Anita, we approve the adjustment on the budget, but I'm prepared to move forward too, because, you know, I know it is a long-term project. We don't know what it's going to look like in 20 years, but I completely agree with County Council that I think we've committed to this by just applying for the funding that we're going to be there to, to give this. So I don't know if wordsmithing a resolution is going to take any changes at this point, so, you know, my thoughts are if we could move forward, I think that's a great idea with the presentation.
Yeah, I don't want to mess anything up.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm, I'd be willing to move ahead. I see a need for speed here. We had RCHDC present at COC. This is hugely important. If there are any remaining questions, I don't know why that should be after it's been kicked around for years. In terms of encumbering the property, this kind of strikes me as similar to a Williamson Act. We're going to put this property into provision of some form of shelter and social services for the next 20 years, just like you don't ask what crops are grown under Williamson Act. You know, you're just going to keep it in some form of agriculture. The, the goal of these contracts is just say, we're approving these loans, and it's part of this, you're going to provide the services to the clients of these homes. So it sounds like the consensus is to bring something back and just move number one. My preference would be to move all three. This is going to be a living document. There's going to be any number of opportunities that this Board and COC will be able to revisit the, the scope of services provided at this facility, but right now, I just want to signal very clearly that this is an important project, and we should move forward with all due haste, notwithstanding any outstanding concerns about the long-term operations there.
Well, my plan is to move forward with all three today, and I think that's what Supervisor Sabatier had suggested also. So moving forward with the project is, sounds like we have a consensus on that, so go from there.
Thank you, Board. Then you have a motion and then two resolutions to be offered if your Board determines to take action on all three today.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the Zoom room?
No hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. Action?
So just, just to clarify, and something Supervisor Sabatier said about, and I know I just don't want to beat it, beat it to death, but I just want to say that with, with shall, make mental health supportive services at the end, it would say that in accordance with county's relevant supportive services plan, so that would, I think, cover what you're discussing about to the best of the capabilities. And I do want that word, but if, if it's the will of the Board to move forward, we'll, we'll go forward. In both, in both resolutions, it has will, so I would just, if there's a possibility, I would just like to change that word, but.
Shall can be changed in the first line of Section 4 of both resolutions, if your Board will approve, offer the resolutions as amended to include that word change.
Okay.
Since it's in my district, I will move to approve the increase in the construction loan amount for the Collier Avenue project in the amount of $22,269.99 and authorize the Chair to sign the loan agreement and directly related documents to effectuate that change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I offer the resolution, the Lake County Board of Supervisors authorizing to participate in the No Place Like Home program, competitive allocation.
to participate in the No Place Like Home program, competitive allocation with the correction.
Second.
Offer.
Sorry.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
It was quiet, I thought there needed some.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
I offer the 2023 Resolution of Lake County Board of Supervisors authorizing acceptance of the County of Lake non-competitive allocation award under the No Place Like Home program with amendments.
All right, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
And Supervisor Pyska?
Yes. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of our items except calendars. So we'll move on to calendars now. Who would like to start?
I'll go ahead and start.
All right.
So finishing up the meeting today, there is a Lower Lake Action Committee meeting this evening. I don't think I'll be attending that, taking care of some, you know, family matters at the tribe. On Wednesday, I see there is agenda review in the morning. I think I'll try and attend that one. We can do that by Zoom, right? We do that on Zoom, excellent. I think I'll be doing that. Don't have anything in the afternoon on the calendar, but Thursday seems to really be filling up. South Deal Committee meeting, and we also have the Geothermal Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday, and then in the morning with the CAO. And then the afternoon, obviously, we'll be here in board chambers for interviews. This weekend, have a couple of, you know, just personal engagements need to, we'll be here in Lake County. And then on the 13th, just some constituents meeting. I will be following up with the public comment today to get her the information on where the county is going. We are, you know, and so I will follow up with Greta, Backyard Gardens, which is a great B and B down in South Lake County. She's a great communicator and, you know, offers a great service for our area. Last Thursday, I attended the Realtors, Lake County Realtors meeting at the New Greenview, the Hidden Valley. There was about 60 participants, just to talk about, you know, kind of the current status of housing in Lake County, I kind of gave them the information. We've got a lot of new faces, you know, here at the county. Since I last stood in front of them, which was quite a while ago, three or four years ago, you know, talked about our economic development position that we'll be adding to the administration office, also looking at long-term focus on housing, which they were definitely interested in. And they really did, you know, bring up some good points. One thing, we talk about housing, we talk about low-income housing, we talk about housing needs. But they really, really wanted to engage down the road to talk about our housing for our government employees, our educators, all of those things. And I know we're thinking about those things, but hopefully we can really focus on that moving forward. And also have the math, the Middletown Area Town Hall is Thursday evening. Talked a little bit about with them too, the fire hazard zones, which will be coming up here on our board. We're going to be drafting a letter for everyone to personally participate in that, fill the form out, get it out there, get your voice heard as we move forward with that. Some interesting topics came up, obviously, they were very interested in the Pillsbury, the lake not coming down, you know, I told them the county Supervisor Sabatier. We've made our stance known where Lake County stands on that issue. If they had any questions, they could reach out to you guys directly. But we, we don't want to see that damn go anywhere. Bottom line, I think I can probably get some calls, but anyway, that's our stance. And it's the right stance at this point. So, you know, I thought that was a good meeting. Obviously, I got to stand in that new Greenview building that was there, so that's what I have. I would also just like to, once again, we had more snow, more things going out there. All of our workers, you know, from our first responders to all, special to everybody who has to work through all those issues, want to thank you very much. And once again, to our community members, because I know there are folks that needed help and neighbors helping neighbors. You hear about that all throughout the community, whether shoveling, you know, seniors driveway to get them out or making sure they're checked on. Multiple things that, that has happened across the county. And I also want to say be prepared for what's coming up next. We've had the cold weather, now we have some pretty strong storms that are potentially being said they're coming into the area. So please be as safe as possible, be prepared, you know, be prepared. If you got to run a generator, be prepared for that this weekend too, because there's a storm coming, let's hope they're 50% wrong and we just get the rain we need. But let's be prepared for it and get stuff cleared that you need to get cleared. So that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, who wants to go next?
I will.
Okay.
All right, so tomorrow I have RCRC in the morning, and then Golden State Finance Authority and Golden State Connect, they all run concurrent tomorrow. So I'll be doing those three. Thursday, South Deal. Friday is PG&E monthly meeting for EPSS outages and also the special meeting. And then Monday, I have the CAO meeting. And then also, I have the Farm, Ranch and Rural Communities Federal Advisory Committee check in with the Region 9 Director Martha Guzman. And then back here to the board on Tuesday. That's it.
Okay. You want to go next?
Sure, trying to find what I had just opened up. I guess I can't find it anymore. So I took part in a couple of CSAC meetings over the last week. One of the major things is they're very focused on homelessness and recognizing that while there have been many vast attempts at dealing with homelessness, that we are not getting the results that we are looking for. I believe it was in the 30s that Sacramento area has seen a 30% increase in homelessness. And every county is, is struggling. And so I took part in a CSAC Rural Caucus meeting, just to get the rural perspective. We want to make sure that we are not being asked to do exactly what urban areas are being asked to, based on our capacity, based on the difference of numbers. But also recognize that our per capita numbers don't look much better, if not sometimes look a little bit worse than some of the urban areas, depending on where you look. And so those were good conversations. The new, the new program that CSAC is looking to open up, it's called At Home, yet a new acronym to walk by. It stands for Accountability Transparency Housing Outreach Mitigation and Economic Opportunity. We are working on some of those things, as Vice Chair Simon mentioned, housing. Really looking forward to that division being bolstered and, and up and running so that we can see what can get done here locally. But to me, the most important is the mitigation. How do we prohibit, how do we mitigate the number of folks that end up being homeless? Because then it becomes a lot easier to help those that are homeless rather than this continuous stream of flowing populations that end up on the streets. And so next month, I believe it's April 11th and 12th, it might be 12th and 13th. I don't have it correct in my head. There's a, I guess, historic meeting that will be occurring in Sacramento, where both Lega Cities and CSAC will be coming together, so all cities and all counties, to discuss this at-home program and policy and how best to unroll this plan so that we can get the benefits and successes that we're looking for from it. I believe that Chair Pyska will be there, I will be there. I haven't checked in to find out who from the cities will be there, but I will be finding that out just to kind of get an idea of what we should expect. At this point, no expectations other than more information and we'll see what happens next. But there's definitely a push at this moment in time to make the impact that we have not yet seen be the impact that we all want to have. So that was a big part of last week. And I know Supervisor, Vice Chair Simon mentioned APC. I don't remember what we did in APC. I know we changed it where you were back in the executive committee. And I'm trying to think of.
There wasn't a whole bunch more, just being prepared with the support letters that we approved today by the board. It was a pretty.
It was a quick meeting.
Uneventful meeting, but an important meeting because, you know, preparing to roll out those grants and other opportunities and continue to get the updates on the construction projects that are happening all throughout Lake County from Caltrans. So that was it.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Also took part in a meeting to discuss potential names for the new middle school that will be opening up in the city of Clear Lake through Conacta Unified School District. Sat down with Vice Chair Simon for that one as well. Good discussion, we'll see what the board decides. And then let's go ahead and look at the upcoming week here. At this moment, my Wednesday and Thursday are not very full. I have some Hope Rising meetings, I have a Lake County Children's Council, which I get the invite, but I, I will double check to see, because I don't think I'm the one that's on that committee. But we'll be also going to the school board meeting. I will change my, it's been four years in the making, my Calpine tour on Friday so I can make sure that I'm here. So I'll have to reschedule that, that tour. And also we'll be checking in at the Warming Center later on that evening to again, just check in and see how things are going over there. And then meeting with our CEO on Monday and supervisor meeting on Tuesday. I have a fairly open opportunity to get a lot of work done. And I hope to get a lot of work done on that database software that I've been speaking of and hopefully get another draft ready to show off to code enforcement, see how they feel.
All right, Supervisor Green?
Thank you. It's more of a listening session, and I don't know if it's going to timeout, but State Water Resources Control Board is meeting today, and they do have a Clear Lake Hitch item on the afternoon calendar, no sooner than 1:00 PM. It's not an exactly timed item. So I don't know exactly where we're at in terms of crafting our engagement strategy. And it's a non-action item, so I don't expect anything earth-shattering to happen today. But it is on calendar for those that have the ability to tune in and interest. Wednesday, Lake County Children's Council. In the evening, I'll be zooming in to Sonoma County is scoping a programmatic EIR. They're looking at revamping their cannabis permitting program fairly substantially. And I'm interested in seeing how that scoping process is going to look like, so I'll be attending that. Thursday, Mental Health Advisory Board. Friday, it looks like we still have that special meeting. And just to echo everyone's compliments about the storm response, staff has just been amazing. Other agencies have been amazing, working in concert with staff. I know they are stretched so, so entirely thin. But a special shout out to Sheriff Howe and Director DeLeon, and appreciate them working with me a little bit to ensure people are safe out in Highland Springs. I know this weather is crazy and we run between occasional blizzards and blue skies and where everything looks perfectly safe. But whether you're on public lands or your private lands, you know, there's a lot of widowmakers out there, a lot of down trees, a lot of hazards that we just don't have the ability to get to immediately. So understanding that and people expressing patience and understanding as our crews prioritize what needs to get done first, which generally involves roads in this county and downed power lines. And then, and then we fill in the gaps later from, for those other needs. So I appreciate everyone's patience as we get through this latest series of storms and look forward to this next atmospheric river event. So, you know, buckle up, everybody. Thank you.
I think it's pretty incredible that we're living through a storm that no one can really remember in history or a storm series. And as, as difficult as it has been, it's also pretty incredible. So I'm trying to stay positive and out there and enjoying the multiple feet of snow that I have in my yard. And, you know, I, huge, huge thanks to the, the road crews that have been out. It's been a long, long haul this winter, starting way back from our atmospheric river storms in the beginning of January and late December. And eventually, the sun is going to shine and it's going to stop precipitating. Spring is right around the corner, but they continue to work so hard on our behalf. The South Lake Fire Volunteers continue to run their plow every single day, addressing needs as they come up to keep the roads clear for emergencies if our road crews can't get to it, because for the first time in a long, long time, they've been having to plow at low elevations. And, and that, you know, that, that affects people at the higher elevations. So to have that volunteer out there driving day and night is, is pretty incredible. So I have a lot of thanks and gratitude for not just our staff, but everybody else that's out there volunteering and, and helping and out there with their chainsaws and, and doing whatever it takes. So again, we, we live in a pretty special community and I'm grateful for everybody who's out there. We did meet with PG&E last week, they sent a delegation up here. And Vice Chair Simon joined us via Zoom, talking about undergrounding strategies, vegetation work, trees, all of it. Come a long way with our relationship with PG&E. Before I was on the board, I, I sat through a lot of meetings when there was a lot of frustration. And, and to have the communication that we have now and the attention that we have now, you know, it's not always perfect, but they are here and they really worked quickly to get power restored after the first storm set. And there have been very few outages over the last couple of days. I almost hate to say that, but if you're, if you're home and, if you're stuck in your home and your driveway's not plowed or your road's not plowed, at least your power's on. And it's much more comfortable. So get out and do that preparation tomorrow, it looks like we're, or today. It looks like we're going to be hit pretty hard this evening and this late afternoon. So I hope everyone is out doing whatever it takes to get prepared. Then tomorrow afternoon is the time to get ready for the rainstorms that are coming. So, you know, we do live in a rural area. And with that, we have some expectations that, you know, we have to be prepared and do what we can to take, take care of ourselves. So I appreciate that everyone is, is doing that and making those moves. But try, try as hard as you can to stay positive, because we cannot control the weather. And ultimately, this precipitation and this cold weather is what we need. And we're, I'm grateful for it to continue. So tomorrow, agenda review. And then I will be at the Middletown Unified School Board meeting later in the day. Thursday, Fire Safe Council. Then I'll be speaking at Woodland College for Women's History Month. I've got the geothermal meeting. And Friday, ooh, what is the, oh, I'm, I'm joining Vice Chair Simon. Friday morning, the meeting with the CAO. We have a, our monthly meeting with PG&E on fast trips, is that still happening? I'm not sure about that. Was that you? Was that your meeting that, I think you, you emailed me that one?
The Friday?
Yeah.
PG&E?
Yes. Okay.
Sorry, I was looking at something.
That's okay, I'll be joining you for that, that's Zoom, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I think so, I just, I need, it's in my email, okay. And then I've got my NACO breakout group at 11:00. I'll be here for the board meeting, although I had intended to go to Cobb Mountain Kindergarten, the Arctic Animal Fair, which I was really looking forward to, getting my dose of Kinder. So I will, I'll have to catch them another time. And join all of my colleagues here for our special meeting. And Saturday is the rescheduled crab feed for the Cobb Mountain Lions, who generously continues to show up for the community in, when their Warming Center, Kelseyville, St. Patty's Day, Swig and Jake has been canceled, so that's unfortunate. And then Monday, our meeting with CAO Parker, and then back here on Tuesday. Okay. So that is it for our regular items. We'll move into closed session. We have quite a few things today to get to. 8.1. 8.1 is Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B, interview for Public Health Officer, Appointment of Public Health Officer. 8.2 is Public Employee Evaluation, Community Development Director. 8.3 is Public Employee Evaluation, Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Director. 8.4 is Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Complaint Under the California Fair Employment Act, Pomeroy v. County of Lake et al. 8.5, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9DD1, City of Clear Lake v. Testate and Inte, is it Inte, Inte State? Testate and Inte State. Successors of Bailey Lumber Company et al. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Five-minute break.
Let's take a break.